This is the call order of the regular meeting of July the 17th, 2023. This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public. It is not to be considered a public meeting. Can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Anderson.
Present.
Ms. Bryant. Ms. Ellis.
Present.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
I'm here.
Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, everybody's had a chance to look at the agenda. Is there any corrections, additions? Okay. Can we have the motion to accept the agenda?
Certainly.
Avoid that. Accepted, yeah, of the agenda for the July 17th, 2023, regular meeting of the Mount Healthy Board of Education.
Second.
Any questions or anything? Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Okay. Can we have a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting held on June the 26th?
Certainly.
Do you have any questions? Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Okay. Special orders, Mount Healthy Teachers Association, anybody here?
No.
Okay, any communications?
No.
All right. I know you all don't, I'm gonna rediscover this on there. For those members of the audience who do not wish to stay for the business portion of this meeting, now is the appropriate time for you to leave the meeting. Now, everybody don't run at the same time. Soon as I figure out how to take this off of this tablet and print it, I'll do that. I hope it don't go out on me. Okay, this is the highlights of the July 12th Great Oaks Board of Directors meeting. The state budget review and changes to the Ohio Department of Education and State Board of Education. Both the President's report and the legislative report included information about the state budget for '23 and '24, and '24 and '25. The budget includes a $3 million investment in career tech education. $200 million for new expanded facilities, and $100 million for Ohio's Career Tech Equipment Grant Program. Senate Bill 1 was included in the budget bill and includes changes to the Department of Education role and responsibility. The renamed and reformed Department of Education and Workforce, DUC, will have a cabinet-level director appointment soon. ODA will now be mainly limited to teacher, disciplinary and licensure cases, and territorial disputes. They made some changes in their leadership. Campus leadership teams and teaching and learning teams were announced. Diamond Oaks Dean Dan Russ, Assistant Dean Jennifer Atkins, and Scott Colliclaw. Laurel Oaks Dean is Annie McCool, Assistant Deans are Shay Havens-White and Jillian Richmond-Russell. Live Oaks Dean Amy Kraus, Assistant Dean Desiree Runk and Jeremy Pitt. And Scarlet Oaks Dean Matt Lindsey, Assistant Dean Krista Buckholzer, Andy Urkel, and Jimmy Carter. She said, "Not the President." Okay. Teaching and Learning Directors is Angie Collins, Assistant Director Susan Haskel. CTE Specialist Lead is Russ Croftway. TNL Specialist is Laren Lauren Villenstein. Missy Robinson, Sarah Taylor, and CT Program Specialist Jim Hansel, Dennis Hogel, Nicole Hensley, Mark Chapin, and Murdaugh Smith. Construction projects update, the President's/CEO reviewed the construction progress at the Live Oaks Career Campus, Scarlet Oaks Career Campus, unit replacement project at Scarlet Oaks, and the reconfigurating and remodeling of existing spaces at Diamond Oaks Career Campus for internship specialists and student workplace and enlarging the cafeteria to accommodate enrollment increases. There, what they're doing is, all the entrances to their campuses, you just walked in the door, you were in there. So now, what they're doing is putting another barrier there so people can't just walk through because you'll stop at that first barrier and then someone has to let you in. You know, somebody always says, you know, "You gotta be safer." Okay, new programs. The Board approved the Education Program Design and Evaluation Committee recommendations of adding 10 new programs and course offerings and divesting in five programs. The Board also approved nine program name changes. Among the new programs are the '23-'24 School Year Agricultural Science at Washington High School, Culinary Foundation at Clinton-Mancy Middle School, and High School Digital and Digital Graphic Design at Miami Trace High School. Gateway to Technology at both Wilmington Middle School and North College Hill Middle School, and High School HVAC at Scarlet Oaks. Heavy Equipment, Operation, and Engineering at Scarlet Oaks. Project Lead the Way Engineering at Mason High School, and for Adult Workforce Development Program, both paramedic and practical nursing. Grants approved, the Board approved two grants for '23-'24 School Year, Fifth School Year '24 Career and Technical Education Planning District from the Carl Perkins Allocation and Agricultural Education Fifth Quarter Grant. Great Oaks Coordinators and Compliance Officers. Great Oaks Educational Foundation Golf Outing, the Great Oaks Educational Foundation Golf Outing was held on June the 12th at the Blue Ash Golf Course. The foundation had 124 golfers and 19 non-golfers that participated in relief with $40,000 for future grants and scholarship needs. That's the end of it. He's never been so wordy before. Okay, that's the end of my report. Legislative, Ms. Anderson.
My day got away from me, so I also didn't get mine printed. I apologize, but I can send it to anyone who needs it. So, the House Bill 183 that, Carol, you asked for more information on last month.
Yeah.
It didn't have the language in front of me, I wanted to have that. Last month, as I said, it was referred to the House Higher Education Committee. It would require K-12 and college students to use bathrooms and locker rooms that match their sex at birth. It also prohibits schools from letting students share overnight accommodations with the opposite biological sex. K-12 schools and universities could still offer single-use facilities for students. The restrictions don't apply to children under 10 being assisted by a family member or to someone helping a person with a disability. Again, that's just in the House right now, it's just, it has not gone anywhere else. Also, the biennial budget assigned by Governor DeWine, the state's two-year operating budget. It was signed on July 4th. Ed Choice voucher expansion was kept in the final form of the budget and is set to cost Ohio taxpayers an additional $825 million compared to what it's currently spending on vouchers. No additional assessment measures, report cards, financial reporting, or auditing stipulations have been tied to Ed Choice voucher expansion, leaving Ohio taxpayers in the dark if this increased public spending is beneficial to all or only non-public schools in their private interests. Changes to the State Board of Education were also kept in the final version of the budget, signed by DeWine. The partially-elected State Board of Education is to be stripped of all but its regulatory powers and will no longer be acting in any significant way on behalf of the citizens they represent. Now, the major policymaking powers previously held by the State Board of Education will be given to a cabinet-level agency, the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce. The State Board will now be responsible only for teacher licensure and territory transfers. Some notable portions of the House Bill 33 are, it reduces the number of personal income tax brackets, just two, with rates of 2.75% and 3.5%. It requires ODE to provide reimbursements to make school breakfast and lunch free for all students eligible for reduced-price meals. It increases the new teacher-based salary to $35,000 and adjusts the stepped teacher salary schedule. Requires all sports, gaming revenue to be used to support public and non-public education for students K-12. And requires each school district to provide free feminine hygiene products to girls enrolling grades 6 through 12.
Grade what?
6 through 12.
It starts early, doesn't it, somewhere?
I know, I know.
But I'm assuming y'all have given to them.
We received a grant last year that provided that for our students.
No, I meant, she said 6 through 12. Yeah, but what if you got somebody below 12?
We do in the elementaries all the way up to the high schools.
It isn't just a grade?
Right.
Okay.
We have it in all of our buildings.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we'll have the reported treasurer.
Thank you. I'd like to first take this opportunity to say thank you to Chuck Soule, who is not here tonight. He is transitioning from being our Assistant Treasurer, and he's going to be going back into the academic world. And I just want to say thank you to him and his absence for the work that he's done to help to transition me into the Treasurer's office. And also, I'd like to introduce our new Assistant Treasurer, Taya Green-Bondai. She is coming from Cincinnati Public along with me. She does bring a lot of experience along with her. She was an accountant, she's been an accountant for many years, and she also has federal background knowledge. So, I thought that would be a good fit for Mount Healthy to help us because I know that a lot of us are still learning when it comes to the federal grant side of the House. And she has, I'm gonna say, at least 10 years of knowledge when it comes to federal funds. So, she has truly been an asset, and I just wanted to make sure that I took the opportunity to introduce you all to her and her to the Board. So, thank you very much. Okay, so, for Letter A, I'm recommending that the Board would accept the financial statements for June 2023.
Can I have a motion?
Second.
Anderson, Turner.
Any questions? Do we have roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant. Ms. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Letter B, I'm asking for recommendations to approve the revised advances or transfers of funds required to close out fiscal year 2023.
Okay, can I get a motion accept?
Second.
Okay, any questions? Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant. Ms. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
And Letter C, I'm recommending to adopt the revised fiscal year '23 final appropriations within the county auditor's amended certificate.
Can we have a motion?
Second.
Any questions? Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant. Ms. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We'll have something from the superintendent next.
Great, thank you, Ms. Ellis. So, before we start, tonight, we are having a graduation at the high school. If any of you would like to join us after the board meeting, it will be at 7:30, and we have 11 seniors that finished up their requirements this summer, and they will be walking across the stage and getting their diploma, so. And we also, Dr. Ogden reminded me, we did have four additional students that completed the requirements through our High Roads program. And so, you know, that is really exciting because that's 15 students that, I hate to say traditionally, may not have received a diploma. So, we are very, very excited about the work and everything that's being done for them. So, if you want, join us at the high school, 7:30, and we will be celebrating with them. At the high school auditorium.
Auditorium, okay.
Yes. So, we're super excited about that. Item A is some, just some informational items. The first are a few change orders that are going along with the culinary project. The first, the training room floor, the change order was for $10,949.90. We decided to put an epoxy coating on the floor because a lot of our athletes wear cleats, and the other flooring, we felt, would have a lot of wear and tear on it. So, while they were doing that, we went ahead and made that change. Change order for the schedule change is actually just saying they're on track, which is great, but they put through the change order, so it's not saying it's going to be delayed, but they are on time for our project. The change order 018 for $1,487.98 is just related to an egress for the training room. And there will be a few other modifications we have to make for the training room that will be coming next month, but the egress is important for exiting. So, that's just some informational. We did receive several grants again, and I just really want to commend Connie and her team. They are doing some amazing work with the grants. And just every month, I think sometimes we get so used to it because every month it's like, oh, more grant money. But that's not normal. So, I'm really excited to highlight, we received $10,107.75 from the Ohio Department of Education, and this is specifically the Early Childhood Special Education Grant. We received $101,250, and this was for a grant for comprehensive literacy, specifically birth through kindergarten. So, that work will be in our Early Learning Center. So, that is amazing that we received that extra money just to help with literacy. The next one, we received the Stronger Connections Grant, $148,158.41. And all of those together, you know, that's like a quarter of a million dollars right there that we received in the last month with grants. So, we're very, very excited for all the work that they have been doing. HCC will continue to manage our cybersecurity. And this is just some informational items. Mount Healthy South is going to be partnering with Poppy's Therapeutic Corner to help provide behavioral health services for our students. Dr. Thomas had a great relationship with them in the past, and they will be coming and helping with that. I understand there's no cost for that, so that's exciting, that there'll be some additional supports. The other providers we wanted to list that will be helping with our special education services, they have helped in the past, but we just wanted to highlight the different organizations. We have Applied Behavioral Services, Best Point Height Center, Best Point Full Day, Bright Star Healthcare, Centene for Autism, Hamilton County Developmental Disability Services, New Path, Ohio Valley Voices, St. Rudy's School for the Death, TC Harris School and Academy, Warren County ESC for Social Communications, and Warren County Wellness Center. And last year, we spent with all of these organizations about 820,000. They are specific to what is in the IEP for our students. So, that's just informational. Item B is the recommendation to enter into a contract with Jennifer Danner as manager of the Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant for the '23-'24 School Year. The cost is $62,000, and that will be paid for with grant funds.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Any questions? Can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant. Ms. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Thank you. Item C is the recommendation to approve White Facility Services Incorporated for the high school football field conduit boring. The cost will be $55,848. It's important that we do this right now while the turf is being finalized because we do need a new scoreboard. And when we find the money for that, a conduit would have to be laid, so we wanted to do that now instead of later.
Right, can we have a motion?
Second.
Second.
Any questions? Can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant. Mrs. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Item D is the recommendation to approve White Facility Services to repair interior lighting damage in 30 classrooms at North Elementary caused by lightning strike. If you recall, actually, when we were at the National School Boards, we had that lightning strike, and North actually didn't have school for a few days.
While we dealt with Chuck and his team, which is hard to get enough lights functioning, but it requires some extensive repair, and the cost is $154,340. We anticipate that our insurance will cover that, but we have to go through a process.
To add to that, Dr. Ogden?
Yeah, one of the things that made us difficult really was the place because it happened to be spring, and one of that, we dropped the company, and it was put up there. Essentially, this system is allocated and through a ballot involves confusing doors. The systems are no longer going to be made starting in December '23, so we're taking a different route. There are a couple other school districts that are connected with us, as we did in the past. So, we're working diligently and looking for the future. We are going to essentially moving on to some of the material from North because South is running the exact same way. So, for example, a ballot that holds, that brings two lights together, it will no longer be there. Right now, they're about $320, so we'll be able to essentially store them away to make South last long.
Sounds wonderful. Okay, can we have a motion?
Second.
Second.
Are there any questions?
So, you're saying it has been submitted to the insurance?
It has been submitted, yes.
And this is just in case, why not?
Well, I don't like to count my chickens before they're hatched, so this is, we needed a quote initially to submit to insurance. So, we've been waiting on Mr. White. He's the electrician, we go through, and he's done a wonderful job of, you saw, he laid the conduit for us. And he did a really good job of helping out the Mount Healthy school. In fact, when they were doing the football field, the company that he subbed to go underneath the concrete tree to bring the conduit up, said, "We gotta rip all this concrete out." It would have probably been another $15,000. He personally showed up and quote-unquote, "Had them thread the needles" so that we didn't have to tear up the concrete. So, we needed a quote to submit to insurance, and now we're going to that process.
Good, roll call.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant. Ms. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Thank you. Item E is the recommendation to approve a one-year contract with Peck and Hannaford and Briggs for maintenance and prevention, maintenance for HVAC for all of our district buildings, and the cost is $102,520.
Can we get a motion?
Second.
Any questions? Can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Ms. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Thank you. Item F is the recommendation to enter into a service agreement with Teresa Dick as a consultant for Mount Healthy School District during the '23-'24 School Year for up to 10 days at the rate of $500 per day. She is trained in the letters training, and she has served, Jana can speak a little bit more. So, it's much cheaper, she retired this year to bring her back to do the letters training than to go through the organization. Jana did.
She has one of our most prestigious teachers that trains her on certain units and nobody else has trained her to do this. So, it's a higher hour to do that.
All right, can we have a motion, please?
Second.
Any questions? Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant. Mrs. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Thank you. Item G is the recommendation to accept bus routes and bus stops for the '23-'24 School Year with the authorization for the superintendent to change routes as may become necessary.
Can we get a motion?
Second.
Second.
Turner.
I got a question. Did we change any of?
Heather is here.
So, our next question would be, are any routes changing, like, are we starting early? I know that we once had a little problem not starting the highs and stuff.
South is on this. North will be different in the ELC, is that right?
Can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Thank you. Item H is the recommendation to approve the following resolution for declaring transportation to be impractical for the '23-'24 School Year, whereas students identified on the attached document have been determined to be residents of this school district and eligible for transportation services. And whereas, after careful evaluation of all available options, it has been determined that it is impractical to provide transportation for these students to their selected schools. And whereas, the following factors, as identified in Revised Code 3327.02, have been considered. One, the time and distance required to provide the transportation. Two, the number of pupils transported. Three, the cost of providing transportation in terms of equipment, maintenance, personnel, and administration. Four, whether similar or equivalent services provided to other pupils eligible for transportation. Five, whether and what to extent the additional service unavoidably disrupts the current transportation schedules. And six, whether other reimbursable types of transportation are available. And whereas, the option of offering payment in lieu of transportation is provided in the Ohio Revised Code, therefore be it resolved that Mount Healthy City School District Board of Education hereby approves the declaration that it is impractical to transport the students identified on the attached document and offers the parent guardians of the students named on the attachment payment in lieu of transportation.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions? You got that report?
Yeah, the names were sent, emailed, in the Board.
In what?
The information that was sent to the Board.
Oh, okay, okay.
And this is primarily students who are going to our parochial schools. There were some changes that were made.
Okay. Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant. Mrs. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Thank you. Item I is the recommendation to approve a resolution of intention to initiate termination of employment contract of Kevin Veneman, and that was provided in a separate attachment.
Can we have a motion?
Second.
Any questions? Can we have roll call? Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item J is the recommendation to enter into a service agreement with Peterman L T D to provide transportation services for special needs service, special needs students. The estimated cost is around twenty-five thousand.
Can we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item K is the recommendation to enter into a contract with Universal Transportation Systems as a provider for special needs homeless and foster student transportation. The estimated cost would be around twenty-five thousand.
Can we get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item L is the recommendation to approve Everdriven Technologies LLC as a provider for special needs homeless and foster student transportation. The estimated cost is twenty-five thousand.
Can we get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Um, I got a question. The name don't sound like what they're gonna do.
That's true, that's true, Everdriven.
Or do they go and get the kids?
They do. They go and pick them up and bring them to school.
Oh, okay. Okay. Roll call.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item M, recommendation to approve the breakfast and lunch programs for the twenty-three-twenty-four school year. All students eat breakfast and lunch for free. If students would like to purchase an additional breakfast or lunch, the cost would be as follows. Breakfast price would be a dollar seventy-five. Lunch prices at the elementary would be three dollars. The junior high and the high school, three fifty, and milk is sixty cents.
Okay, can we get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
Yeah, um, the milk price, that seems awful high.
Frederica?
I'm sorry, can-
It should be higher than that. It's based on a, um, formula that we use is the cost of the milk that we purchase for each little one.
Right.
It's two point five and it should be actually, um, sixty-six cents, but I thought that would be too much of a ride, so I only increased it ten cents. It was fifty for many, 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 many years. And we had raised prices since, um, school year two thousand and thirteen.
Yeah, for some reason sixty cents seems awful high for a little container of milk. But here's what it is they got.
This is if they're buying the-
Oh, yeah, I mean, the milk is included in the milk.
Oh, it's, oh, okay, I thought that they wanted to buy an additional milk.
They want extra, so they get everything for free, but they want additional, like an additional-
That's what I was talking about, for another sixty cent.
Do you still do that thing where they don't want it, they got a table to put it on?
Yes, and we have a ice on the side of the, um, bins so that they can put it in there for other kids to come over there.
Okay.
They have to put a certain amount of ice.
Okay. Could we have a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item N is the recommendation to accept the following donations. We're excited about the donations. A thousand dollars was donated by American Facade Restoration LLC for the Mount Healthy Football Program and a thousand dollars was donated by Four Seasons Environmental for the Mount Healthy Football Program. And this primarily will be used for meals for our students at different times during the season.
Okay, can we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? Can we get roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item O is the recommendation to approve the Mount Healthy High School Student Handbook for the twenty-twenty-three-twenty-four school year.
Can we get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Can we get roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item P is the recommendation- Station to approve the Mount Healthy Junior High School Student Handbook for the twenty-twenty-three-twenty-four school year.
Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any questions? Can we get roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item Q is the recommendation to approve the Elementary Student Handbook for the twenty-twenty-three-twenty-four school year.
Can we get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Can we get roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item M is the recommendation to approve the Early Learning Center Student Handbook for the twenty-twenty-three-twenty-four school year.
Can we get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item S is the recommendation to approve the Preschool Student Handbook for the twenty-twenty-three-twenty-four school year.
So. Second.
Take your pick. Anderson, Turner.
I'll be ten, Turner, maybe. Okay, any questions? Is this, is this different from the Early Learning Center?
It is. There are different guidelines for preschool. You know, preschool only attends half a day, so there's, there are things specific to preschool that are not in kindergarten.
Okay.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item T is the consent agenda as listed.
Can we get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Can we get roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?